Well, thank you all for coming this evening. This is a special meeting of the City Council. We will have a public comment period. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item, of which we only have one this evening. And again, as always, we ask you to be civil with your comments. So is there anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Schuman?
Rich Schuman, thanks for having me here tonight. One of the people who put their name in the hat, met with some of you over the last week or so. Again, just wanted to offer my services to the city, to the community of Boulder City. Love to be considerate. A privilege to be appointed back to the City Council. I think there's one thing that I can bring, and that's experience. I did serve on the council recently for four years, and would love the opportunity to do it again. So appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Hutchinson? Yes, Mr. Hunt.
Good evening. I'm Ainsworth Hunt. I'm concerned with appearances of cronyism. I'm concerned with appearances of a small group of people having control over what takes place with City Council. And I'd be very surprised if Judy Hoskins' name doesn't come bubbling up this evening by City Council. I like her. I respect her. I've been to her home. I don't think her resume compares favorably with that of Neil Saniakan. I believe that Neil would bring more research, more homework, more effort to City Council than any other candidate that's here tonight. I understand why some people may find that he is disagreeable. But I also understand that without his efforts, a lot of what happened in the early days of the Boulder City Community Alliance would not have taken place in the manner that they did. His research was instrumental in getting the Hoover Dam Gateway Center tabled, although I do see a water line to nowhere reaching out into the desert with fire hydrants, which causes me more than a little concern and alarm. I guess that's "if you build it, they will come" theory. But I've written to City Council about this. I got responses from three out of four of you. Thank you very much for your replies. And my concern is not for the immediate future of Boulder City. I believe that the people who are sitting in front of me put the city in competent hands. My concern is that making the wrong decision this evening could lead to a backlash at the next election and undo a lot of the hard work that's already taken place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Adele, I believe, in the back?
Hello. My name is Dahl Sherwood, and I'm a resident. I am sure that you have read all the resumes and will appoint the right person for your council. I just want you to know that I'm not a part of the BCCA, and I trust your judgment.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Rob Martin, Boulder City resident. Obviously, what you're going to be doing tonight's important, and I think that this is the right way you're doing it, because I don't think doing the election was a good idea. And I said that last time. I actually do support Judy Hoskins. Being on the council, I think she'd be a good choice and a good decision. And I respect Neil and many other people that have applied. But I do think that in the long run, that would be best for Boulder City. And let's talk about why Boulder City can be a better place. And that's one of the things we're all trying to do, is make it a little bit more collegial, make it more that it's a growing, earning, vibrant place. And by the way, the airport meeting is in about a half hour, and I'd love any of you to come to that, because there's a big mess going on in the airport that I'd love to have any of you involved in, because the staff is... That's a different issue. But to go back to this, for now, what's happening here is really a wonderful thing. I mean, I used to... I went to Warren once a week, twice a week, in the last three or four months, pretty much every week. And he and I became actually fairly close in the last couple of years. And I think he would honor what you're doing here as the right way to go. And then you've got to, you know, continue to have a separate voice. There needs to be more than one voice, which I think there will be, by the way. And so it's all about how do we make Boulder City even greater than it is? And it's a great place. But this is how we're going to do it, is with a vibrant City Council, which I think this will help to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm sorry, I can't see out. There you go. Dr. McNay?
Good evening, Mayor, and a great City Council here. I'm Valerie J. McNay, been Boulder City resident for 25 years, and I think, like we all do who are here, we love Boulder City. And I just have to open my big mouth and say that I really do think that Judith Hoskins would be a wonderful addition to our City Council, due to she is so intelligent and knowledgeable and experienced about all things Boulder City. When I was on the library board, and we had some real challenges with the former director of the library, and if it wasn't for Judy's research and hard work, you know, to help us to build a case that convinced us that she really needed to go for the best interests of our community, and she was instrumental in that, she's like the Energizer Bunny for all things good in Boulder City. I mean, like, she's going to be having her home, opening up her home again, which she does many times, for the AAUW Home Tour fundraiser for scholarships. She's going to be opening up her home again for Ann... I'll kill her name. The supervisor of the animal shelter to help do fundraising and get donations. And, you know, she's just... In my 20 years I've known her, she's a fighter, a diligent worker, and I think she'd be a great ex, that's the council. And I just want to say, "Go Judy!"
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Darren Jones. I'm a Boulder City resident. Just like to throw my hat in the ring. If you guys need me, I'm ready to serve. You guys have my application, my resume, so I'm here if you need me. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Saniakan?
My name is Neil Saniakan, and I'm so glad there have been so many people that have applied. That's a marvelous thing, and I'm glad we're doing this by appointment. I've lived here for 35 years. I've been extremely active in the study of all matters. I've been speaking at council meetings. I've done research for Mr. McManus and most of the past councils at Mr. McManus's help and assistance in asking me to do work for him. My background is as chairman of the Planning Commission, the Charter Commission, head of the CEDAC, Citizen Development Allotment Evaluation Committee. I was appointed by Bob Ferraro in the council to be the Southern Nevada Strategic Planning Authority Rep, representing Boulder City on a countywide commission because of my background. I graduated from UC Berkeley in finance and accounting. I have a background in detailed financial analysis. I have a background in zoning. I have a background in syndications, real estate in $1984 of around $20 million or more per property. I retired very well off around '84, and I float back in and out. I operated the Vaughn Center for a while. The reason I'm running is because I care about Boulder City. I've been asked for 35 years to run for City Council, and I've declined it. Right now, I see a tremendous need, and that's why, contrary to what I told Mr. McManus when he asked me, I wanted to be retired as of June. And I wouldn't mind being retired. I'm just putting my hat in the ring. I see a need because we have three very new people with no background, and that's great. James is a very brilliant young man. Claudia has a degree in business. Tracy, very good people. I have concern that all of you, including Warren, were put on by the Boulder City Community Alliance. There's too many chefs that may spoil the soup, and you were attacked by the press last time when Tracy was appointed by Hallie. Or not attacked, but she made note that there's too many BCCA people. And frankly, I have to agree, there has to be more of a mix. I was involved in stopping Gateway. I put out all of the information. I wrote Tom Clement's YouTube. I did my own YouTube on the bypass. I was involved in the hangar analysis at the request of Mr. McManus. In looking at the resumes of Judy Hoskins, she's a very nice lady. I respect Judy Hoskins, and I understand her friends coming forward. Judy Hoskins does not have my background or any background that I really see in terms of committee work, zoning, any of the things that I've talked about. She is BCCA. She did work with the mayor, and she would be, according to Judy, a big supporter of the mayor. And I find that objectionable. I think that there should be diversity, and I'm not with the BCCA. I don't want to see any councilman have a lock with three votes by putting somebody on that doesn't meet qualifications when you do a Ben Franklin test of all the people involved. I find that objectionable. The most horrific thing I've seen in 35 years is the attack on Claudia Bridges and James Howard Adams by the BCCA. What Netwit put out that email attacking Claudia and James for voting against appointment of a special council? They were caught flat-footed and with no assist from anybody. Mr. Noella, they did the right thing. They couldn't make a stand on that, because they were going up against Stephen Morris, who braided that there was an open meeting law violation. There was not. And for what Mr. Morris did was totally unexcusable, and the press shouldn't have printed it. But I respect both of you, and I told your husband that this wasn't a good place for you. And Marty said, "Well, I can't talk to her. You go talk to her. I can't control what Claudia does." And you brought up your experience in academia with backfighting, and I'm thinking, "Oh my God. You know, this isn't a tea party that you stepped into. This is hardball Boulder City politics." If I don't get appointed, I'll still come to council meetings, and I may run. I do not like what's going on with Mr. Morris, Mr. Noella, and Mrs. Crum. I have proof that they're deceitful people, and they're welcome to sue me for saying that. I'd be glad, and so would my attorney, who's kid's gonna go to Stanford Law. I wish to serve. There's nobody that has my background. I don't want to see a crony put on the council for the benefit of Mr. McManus having three votes to the detriment of Claudia and James, and that's where I see this going. If you want to appoint me, I'm glad to serve. If not, I'll go to the Bahamas for a while and come back by the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor McManus, and members of the council. As you know, my name is Georgette Patterson. I am one of your constituents. I was a supporter of Councilmember Harhay. I worked on his campaign. I am filled with sorrow over this loss. He was such a great man. I agree with his political judgment for Boulder City. I believe in the mandate that the voters set with the two last past elections. I therefore respectfully request your nomination to fill his seat. I have spent the majority of my life as a humble public servant, working to advance the interests of the people, without concern of any personal benefit on my happy half. I have no conflicts of interest. I have no disputes with anybody. I'm fair and open-minded. I will abstain if any conflict did arise. I am a person of great integrity. I appreciate the opportunity to have personally interviewed with each member over the weekend. I respectfully request your support of me tonight to fulfill the remainder of Mr. Harhay's term. I would like to be a factor of change in this city, as requested by the voters, and emphasizing three main priorities of the Slow Growth Ordinance, subsidizing utility rates, and being committed to historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Volz?
Good evening. For the record, Fred Volz. In reviewing the people who have asked for consideration as City Council appointees, it would seem the following qualities are paramount: discerning judgment, brains, maturity, character, works well with others, and unafraid of asking probing questions, such as where is an accounting of $21 million of budgeted but incomplete utility capital projects? The successful appointee needs to be a sweeping generalist, as the issues coming before the council cover a wide swath of disciplines. For those who believe candidates might be swayed by organizations they have some connection to, let's be clear that our court system has long held that we, as individuals, have an inherent right to freely associate with whomever we choose. Unless that association is with the likes of ISIS or Antifa, it should not be a concern or a consideration in assessing the quality of City Council applicants who have independent thinking skills. Considering all of the above, we have two candidates who rise above the pack in their concern for and knowledge of Boulder City. They are Judith Duchaine and Judith Hoskins. Since there is only one seat available, the person who can handle the trials and tribulations of successfully running a homeowners association for a decade and a half deserves the appointment. That person would be Judith Hoskins. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Hoskins?
Hi, I'm Judith Hoskins. Can you hear me? Okay. I would like to read what I submitted, just so that the people will know, and this is for the record. I'm an 18-year resident of Boulder City and a registered voter. My experience as a leader has given me the ability to bring people together and bridge divisions. I'm an independent thinker and a problem solver. My past and present experience would be beneficial to the City Council. I'm retired from the Department of Defense, Defense and Information Systems, with 26-plus years of government service. I held a federal security clearance. My experience: open meeting law, Robert's Rules, NRS 116 and other NRSs, research, development, procurement, accounting, contracts, sales, mediation, real estate, budget, fundraising, organization, leadership, facilitator, and computer programmer. My employment: gone with sales and service. Army and Air Force Exchange Service, Department of the Army, Department of Agriculture, Caterpillar Tractor Company, Defense Department, Department of Defense, Procurement, and Computer Department. Director of the Combined Federal Campaign, CFC, of Franklin County, Ohio. President and co-founder of Flight for Life of Ohio. President of Hoskins Arrow Columbus, Ohio. Currently, the president of Bella Vista Property Owners Association for the past 15-plus years. My membership is with the American Association of University Women, AAUW, here in Boulder City, and the Community Association Institute, CAI. I am not a member of the BCCA, and no one else is a member of BCCA, because they do not have membership. So therefore, I go to a meeting. I actually went to the meeting where Mr. Morris spoke the other day. They have some very good speakers from now and then, and I will go and listen to those. But I am not a member. I'm also a volunteer for the Community Pool Ad Ha Committee, and I volunteer at the Senior Center for Meals on Wheels. I've received many awards throughout my federal service. The last award I received reads as follows: "In recognition of 26 years of distinguished federal service, I have the same goal for this position." I was going to bring my award, because some people have questioned my references, but I brought a copy of it for anyone who would like to see it. Also, it's been said that I have been anointed. I have a confession to make to all of you. I've never been anointed, but I have been baptized. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Chandler?
Travis Chandler, 33-year resident and former council member. Okay, 33-year resident, owner, builder of my home, raised my kids here, and a former member of the council, 2007 to 2011. If experience is the quality you're looking for, I have it. In addition, I would like to bring one more idea. We have had some discussion whether an election is the way to go or appointment. You've chosen appointment. I understand that. Reasons are fine. But the problem with whoever's appointed may be perceived to have an inside advantage when time comes for regular election. What I'd like to offer you is my promise that I will not seek election at that time. So I'll just be a placeholder. I will participate. I will do the work. But I don't want to advantage or disadvantage anybody from the regular election process. This is what I'd like to do, help offer you an alternative way to look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes? Ms. Jorgensen?
Hello, council, mayor. I just wanted to introduce myself. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sherry Jorgensen. I've lived here for 22 years. I've raised my family here. I have four children and a husband. I wanted to give you a little insight. The question I've been asked lately is, "Why? Why would you want to put your name in? Why do you want to run? Did this just come out of the blue? Is this just something you pulled out of your hat?" Not really. It's something I've thought of for a very long time, when my husband and I were first married. I had a desire to run for City Council. We had four children. One of those children has Down Syndrome. That consumed a majority of my time and actually changed the course of my life. But now those children are raised, and now I have the capacity to be able to give back to a community that's given so much to me. Given my daughter an opportunity to be a homecoming princess, where I don't think that would have happened somewhere else. Given the opportunity to serve in high schools and in elementary schools as PAC president or as CBAB chairperson. I was an education senator in college. I've always been civic-minded. I have a grandfather who was a mayor. He also served in World War II. He taught me that freedom, there is a price for freedom, and it's the chance to give back. It's the chance to serve, the chance to make a difference. If we're looking for qualifications, I have many leadership qualifications, and it's very hard to toot your own horn. It feels a little awkward. I also have many service opportunities. I too do Meals on Wheels, but I don't do it so people can see me. I do it because I want to give back to this community. It's the same reason I would serve as a City Council member. I would like to listen to those who have opinions on every side. I would like to do my homework, and then I would like to decide on the issues and the things that face Boulder City. I would hope that you would consider me, and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Dan Patterson. I live here in Boulder also, and I'm here to speak in support of my wife, Georgette Patterson, who just spoke earlier behind me. And thank you for considering the importance and for you doing the job of serving our town. I want to support Georgette, because she actually has experience serving on boards. Currently serves on the Clark County Juvenile Justice Commission, has served on local government boards before, and also has, you know, no real conflicts here in Boulder City. She's not involved in real estate or any development or anything, which have been some of the conflicts that unfortunately I think this town has seen in the past. She comes from a very unconflicted background. I have a daughter here who's in school. We have kids in school now. And I also think it's important for the council to consider maybe getting somebody on there that's pretty close to, at least, the average age of the town. So we're 48 years old. I think that's pretty close to the average age of people in Boulder. And remember the many generations of people that we have living here, and all the different viewpoints that people bring in from different generations, I think is important. What Georgette, I know, is extremely committed to historic preservation, which has been a key issue for people in Boulder City, a very important, crucial issue to the quality of life in our town. Also, I know that her priority is working to try to keep utility rates low in Boulder City, as low as possible for fairness, and supporting the Slow Growth Ordinance, which also is important to the city. So those are just some policy specifics of views that I know that she holds, that I think are very relevant to current debates going on in our town. So I know she's very capable. I love her. She's dedicated, very well experienced, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Duchaine?
Judy Duchaine. For those that don't know, the difference between Judy Hoskins and Judy Duchaine, Judy Hoskins is a little shorter than I am. I have put my name in again to be appointed. I did run for council, but did not make it through the... There were eight of us, and I didn't do bad, but I didn't make it all the way through. So I am very interested in the town. I have gone to as many meetings for all committees: the Parks and Rec, the planning, the historic preservation. I think there's one other, but I can't think of it off the top of my head. So I do take an interest. I pay very close attention. I do read the backup material for every meeting before I go to the meeting, so I know what's going on. I do have a college degree in accounting and business. I haven't worked since I moved to Nevada. All my work was in Arizona and Minnesota, which is where I'm initially from. I worked as a controller, some IT work, just about anything anybody needed doing at whatever companies I worked at. I was always willing to dig in and help and do whatever I could to help, and I would do the same on council. So thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Tyler?
Hello. My name is Tom Tyler. I ran for City Council, and I also, like Judy, did not make it. But I would like to be put in a position where I can gain the knowledge and have the ability to find the research necessary to find out what's going on in the town and that. I'm very interested in utilities. I'm interested in having a balanced budget, as well as the no-growth and that. So I don't have all the facts, but I'd like to be in the position so that I can learn those facts. And I'm retired. I have the time and the ability to do that. I've been involved with the community for a long time, and I moved here in '91. My family is from... is here, my kids, my grandkids, and I want Boulder City to be good for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last chance. Okay, we will go ahead then and close the public comment period and move to our only item on the agenda. I would first like to say that I really appreciate all of the people who stepped up and said that they had an interest in this position. We are a small community here. It's important that we get folks from the community. I believe that very strongly. We certainly seem to have had a very... We certainly seem to have had a very wide array of backgrounds, educational experience, work experience, all of that among the people who put their name in and indicated their interest in this position. So I really want to extend my gratitude for those people doing that, regardless of the outcome of what happens here this evening. I would encourage all of those that did indicate their interest. There are a number of ways that you can continue to participate in this community. I know many of those that did indicate their interest already do that, but I think that there are always opportunities to be involved in Boulder City and would encourage people to continue with that. With that, the process that we will use tonight is each member of council may nominate someone. It takes three votes for that selection to be made. If we're unable to do that and we end up in a tie situation, we will draw by lot as far as among the names where there a tie exists. With that, I will go ahead and open the nominations, and I will place in the nomination Judith Hoskins. I believe Judy has already gone through her background earlier this evening. I believe that she would be an excellent representative on this council. And open it up for other nominations.
First of all, I too want to thank everybody that put their name in the hat. And I got to meet with some of you, and I know it was a very short amount of time from when we decided to go with an appointment to the time we decided till tonight. There are things I've liked about everybody that I spoke to, and this is really hard because it goes beyond liking you. It goes beyond certain qualifications. What it boiled down to me is someone who worked really hard to get up here, who's not up here. I spoke to several people that I feel that what I'd like to see them do is run. You know, in 18 months, we are going to have another election, so there will be several seats up here available. But I would like to nominate Judy DeShane because she is somebody who I could actually sit down with right now, who knows exactly as much about everything that's been on the agendas and has, you know, even talked about going out and looking at properties that came up on the agenda items, and has done quite a bit of homework for someone who's not sitting up here. So like I said, I'd like to nominate Judy DeShane.
Okay, and at this time, the other council members, Mr. Adams, Ms. Folda, you can either submit a name for nomination, or you can second one of the ones that's already been nominated?
I guess, this has been an incredibly difficult decision, obviously. This is very hard for council to make, no matter how, you know, thorough the process, thought out the decision-making. When we are appointing a seat that is otherwise filled by election, there's going to be concerns of political gainsmanship. But for that reason, we need to make sure that we appoint someone who we feel not only has the city's interest at their heart, but also has the resources to realize those ideals. And so I will second Judy DeShane's nomination. She is a critical thinker, independent thinker. Like has been said, she attends every single city council meeting that she can, goes all the committee, commission meetings. She reads those packets. I know she does because she reaches out, she emails me about them, you know. But those qualities alone aren't Judy's. They really aren't. I think that there are many people here who are interested that are equally qualified. For me, the ultimate decision was that when we were last here, Warren Harhay had nominated Judith DeShane because he was confident in her abilities to fill this role. And so I feel it's fitting also to nominate her.
Councilwoman Folda?
Well, I've had the rare opportunity to be on both sides of this. I know what it feels like for you in the audience, and now I know what it feels like up here. And I don't wish either seat on anyone. But yeah, there has been a lot of good candidates. I think more stepped forward now than during the election, so it gave us a lot of people to interview and to speak with, and thank you for all those that did. Make the time to let me get to know you, and I appreciate, every one of them has done good things for our community. They all care a lot about what happens in Boulder City. And what I heard a lot was they want to make sure that we're all represented and that we all make sure we take the time to hear from the community and take time to listen to all sides. Someone that I think does that very well and is a wonderful conflict resolution person and works hard to be fair in all situations is Judith Hoskins, and so I second her nomination.
All right. We are two to two then, so we will have a short recess, and we will prepare the lots, or if they are already prepared, or we have the Funk and Wagonals fishbowl there?
Mayor, just because somebody was nominated, now you close nominations and you can call for the vote.
Very well.
Just because somebody was nominated doesn't mean that it's a draw necessarily because you haven't voted on that. And then just for clarification, it does not require three people to elect somebody or to appoint somebody to the seat. This is not a pass fail as a regular motion. This is a vote on the nomination. So the most votes for that person wins, whether that's two. It could be two, one, one, or three, one, but it's the most votes.
Well, we will take them then in the order of nominations. Those in favor of Judith Hoskins, please say aye.
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 Okay, those in favor of the nomination for Judy DeShane, please say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go back then to the first, Judith Hoskins. Please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And then the second, Judy DeShane. Please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I don't, I don't get it.
Am I not allowed to vote on either nomination?
You can only vote for one.
I thought I had clarified that in case there were...
We'll see if three times the charm then. Those voting for the nomination of Judith Hoskins, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those voting for the nomination of Judith DeShane, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Now we have a tie. So we'll take a short recess, and then we will draw the lot. There is no comment period at this time, Mr. Saniakan. Thank you.
I'm a publicist. I were questioned under the...
Mr. Saniakan, we have a recess right now. We are not doing public comment at this time. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. I had given them the leftover candy from Halloween, from trunker treats so they could give it to the tiny tots, and she was returning my kettle.
You could vote for, or whether you could vote for each candidate?
I will announce we are still in recess. I will go ahead then and call the meeting back to order, and we are then ready to draw lots.
And we've had a request that we show everybody the names on a piece of paper. We have Judy Hoskins, Judy DeShane.
Can we get a little closer shot of that? Remember, this could be mistaken for that soundstage down there in Burbank, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who is going to draw this?
Name is Judith Hoskins. And once again, we'll hold this up so that, little closer in, please. Congratulations, Ms. Hoskins. And again, I would like to say to everyone who did apply for this, thank you very much. I also had an opportunity to meet with some of you. I think we are well-served here in Boulder City by the people who step up for these positions. With that, we will go ahead to our final public comment period then. Again, the comments are limited to five minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak in the final public comment? Mrs. Hoskins?
I'd like to say thank you to everyone, and I've always been a civil servant, and so I will try to work with the other civil servants within the community, the staff. I know what they go through. I know sometimes they're under a lot of pressure, and I think they're not quite as appreciated as they should be, and I will have that appreciation for all of you. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Mr. Schuman?
Well, I just want to say that Judith Hoskins, I've known her for a long time now. She's the, she's head of our HOA where I live, and she is a wonderful choice for city council. She's a, she's a great woman, a lot of tenacity, strong opinions. It's really been great to get to know her over the many years that I've lived in Bella Vista, and congratulations, Judith.
Thank you. In the back, Dr. Manay?
Can't shut me up, I'm sorry. Valerie McNeigh. And I just want to point out that now we're going to have three women and two men. We have a Boulder City council as majority women, just like the Nevada legislature. Woo-hoo!
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Saniakan?
Neil Saniakan, congratulations to Judy Hoskins. To be honest, I'm relieved. I put, I put my name in and did the best I could, and I'll still be able to come to the meetings and help you without being on the council. For one, the clock has been off for a long time. I thought I was going to miss an appointment, but I'm not. Somebody might want to change that. Another, I, the reason I made that request, and I was entitled under the Nevada revised statutes 241, I made a written request to Mrs. Crumb twice and to all of you. I requested to be able to see physically the slip. As you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, that didn't happen the last time, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't tainted, so I wasn't speaking out. I was following up on two written requests to be able to see that under Nevada revised statute. So I just wanted to clear that up. There have been reports made to me and filed by Kristy Kendall, an applicant who was, who is the city attorney for Perump. She's made statements to me personally and filed on what she feels and is unsubstantiated to date is harassment of her husband by Mr. Noyla. We don't know that, but I think it's worth somebody looking into. I've been contacted personally again by an employee who I've known for years telling me that they're being harassed. That's a relative thing. Who knows what that is? But I want to bring it to your attention and hope that you act on it because I deem it very serious. I deem the people more than credible. For myself, I wish to bring up, and this is very unpleasant for me, in 2011, I was very, very vocal, and I called for the removal of David Olson, the city attorney, for numerous mistakes costing the city a fortune. Mr. Olson retaliated by saying that I threatened his life. That was totally false, and rumors were spread. I don't threaten people's lives. I have attorneys to threaten people. My attorney came in. Roger Tobler admitted what happened, and everything was fine. I didn't file legal action, although my attorney then, Barry, needed braces for one of his children that's now going to Stanford Law School. So I dropped it. Now again, Mrs. Crumb has accused me of threatening her in the past. I told her that all of us were lucky that a committee ended, lucky that a committee ended. Mrs. Crumb sent a message through Mr. Noyla that by saying that, lucky meant that that was a physical threat to her. Yeah, where did she come off? Mr. Noyla took it and sent a constable to my home to intimidate me. Tammy McKay filed the false affidavit with the Attorney General saying that I was some kind of a threat to her. I have that affidavit, and I have an email from Mr. Shea falsely supporting it. He said that he broke it up. Mrs. McKay said some policeman intervened. Well, that some policeman isn't on camera, and I was sitting right here in the front row the whole time with counsel right there. Mr. Shea said, well, he may have been that policeman, not a policeman, but said that this policeman, if it did exist, he moved to San Francisco, and they don't know where he is. Tammy McKay started with me the other night. I had asked for the appraisal for Track 350. Mrs. McKay not accosted me, confronted me in the hall, and asked me why I was tattling to the city attorney or to Mr. McManus. Again, she sat there and glared at me several times during the meeting and making faces at me. And then today, I got an email from Mrs. Crumb saying that I can't write to Tammy McKay anymore. I have employed Mark Windaza. He's $700 an hour. They sent somebody here when you guys started with me in May, and Alex had to drive in rush hour traffic for three hours and sit here, and that's a lot of money. They would like me to pursue action. Barry, who I also copy in Beverly Hills, he's saying sue him. Barry says sue him at the drop of a hat. Now, I don't want to sue anybody, but I don't want people sending constables to my home. I don't want to be accused of falsely threatening people. I've never threatened anybody. Matt DiTeresa is telling people that I physically threatened him. I did threaten him. I told him if he kept lying about me, I would have Barry have a talk with him. That was my threat to Matt DiTeresa. I've never threatened physically anybody. And I am passionate, but as for... anybody. And I am passionate, but as for physical threats, Mrs. Crumb, and Mr. Noella, and Mr. Morris, and Mrs. McKay, that's bogus. And the next person that starts with me falsely is going to wind up with a private suit. I'm not going to sue the city, but individually, I have that right, and pool pack isn't going to cover any of you.
Please bring it to a conclusion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forearmed is forewarned, or forewarned is forearmed. I'm not sure how that goes, but take it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane. It's seven o'clock, but if we adjourn quick, remind people that at the Smith Center, they're having an electric vehicle seminar education, and if you rush right over out of council, you can probably do it. And as I understand it, they were going to have test drive, that you could test drive, and supposedly a lot of questions or whatever. So I just wanted to remind people of that, that they still could make it for an hour.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment then, and the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.